I will now call to order the August 18, 2014 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to order. If you would stand with me, observe moment of silence, and then I will lead you in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Want to welcome you in attendance as well as those that might want to listen to the audio later on to tonight's city council meeting. The next item is the consent agenda. Councilman Edmondson asked that I pull item F. There are other items that need to be pulled. If not, I'll accept a motion to approve everything except item F. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Welcome.
Councilman Levsey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
We almost have balance now. Councilman Edmondson?
Well, since we've been talking about budgets and stuff, item F is resolution approving the purchase of seven patrol vehicles for the Blue Springs Police Department. And of those vehicles, there's five of those are SUVs and two of them are the sedans. There is a difference of cost surprising to most people that don't keep up on this. The sedans are actually, the SUVs are actually cheaper than sedans. And I guess my question would be if no other reason than to save some money, why we don't go with the larger SUVs. They get around better, they have more room for the patrol vehicles, we don't have a problem with the officers fitting inside the vehicles as we do with the sedans. So I guess I'm putting that question out. I guess Chief, you can help me out on that. To me, I just see, why not save $1,500?
We could do it either way. However, that's the request I got from patrol. We'd like to have a little variety of the use of vehicles. While certainly the SUVs can accommodate all sizes, there are some people who prefer to drive a little smaller car that are smaller in stature themselves. And so we typically have a little bit of mix. Over the past couple of times, we've been very heavy on the SUVs. We've had a larger number of SUVs each time, so our fleet's getting pretty small with the smaller cars, but we do like to keep a couple of them.
Okay. My opinion would be, you know, we're talking about budget times and how to save money here for other things. Why not just go ahead and save the $1,500 and get all the SUVs on this?
Is there a trade-off in gas mileage?
There is, but I don't know the extent of that. I'd need to get somebody from Garage to detail that. I don't think it's very great.
Councilman Carter?
Is there a difference in engine size? Is there a reason why you might want the cars? Do they have a bigger engine, able to go faster?
The power is very similar, and either vehicle is pursuit rated. So from our standpoint, what we need is a vehicle that we could pursue if we have to pursue, and either of the vehicles would accommodate that.
Any other comments? Back to you, Councilman Edmondson. You have a motion?
I would just like to move to go ahead and just make it all SUVs and save ourselves the $1,500.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to Mrs. Nakota in the presentation on how to open a business in Blue Springs, and you have a supporting cast that I'm sure you will introduce.
Oh, yes. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. I am very excited to be here tonight to talk about kind of the completion of a large-scale project for both my office, the City Chamber, and the EDC altogether. One of the things that we're doing tonight is kind of our public launch of this new product that you guys have at your desks. It is the How to Start a Business in Blue Springs booklet. Who developed this project? Well, we did. In fact, I'd like to kind of have my supporting cast, as it were, stand up. These are people from both the Finance Department as well as the Chamber who helped me author this booklet. So I'd like to give them kind of a quick round of applause. The reason why this booklet is what I hope to be as successful as possible is because it was taken with a comprehensive approach. We could have hired a consultant to come in and help us write this, but we decided, you know what? We know this process better than anybody. We should write it ourselves. So you guys can go ahead and sit down. Thanks. So that's kind of how this journey began. The Grow Blue Springs Initiative started in May 2012. The City of Blue Springs launched an Internal Development Committee in 2013. This booklet and this process was established as a priority by the Chamber Board of Directors in 2013, and the How to Open a Business in Blue Springs Committee formed last year in early 2013. Now, I know what you guys are thinking is, wow, it took you over a year to write a book. But really, what this did was it allowed us to internally take a look at our processes and see where we could improve. It took, the Chamber and the EDC also looked at their internal process and saw, what is the current process? Where can we improve before we kind of launch this external campaign of how great it is to actually open a business here in Blue Springs? And to me, I think we got a better product because of it. We had several project goals that we set off in the very first meeting. First was to create a guide. This booklet actually came out, I was sitting in Chamber meeting, and one of the businesses said, well, you know, it's not like you guys have a guide on how to do this. And they were right. So after that meeting, kind of got together and said, why don't we have a guide? So that's actually one of the genesis of how this project came to be. We also, at the city side, took it as a way to kind of streamline some internal processes, making all of our forms online and fillable. And I don't know if you guys have gotten onto the city's new website, but all the forms that are available on the city's new website are fillable. That doesn't sound like it's a big thing until you have 360 forms to have to do. So that was also one of the things that we did. And I hope you guys have seen the new city's website, but it kind of dovetails into this timeline for that reason, to create a unified message with our partner organizations. We had, some of the feedback we had was that they were getting different messages from different partners. I mean, they would call one entity, hear one thing, call another entity, hear another. So one of the things that we were doing is creating a songbook. So that way, when you call any agency, you get the same approach. Establishing a point of contact for new businesses, this was another thing that as we were going through the process, we realized that there's not one agency that kind of spearheads new business. Through this process, we established that, and that's going to be the Chamber of Commerce. One of the things when we're going around, we're telling people about this new great resource is tell them, if you have any questions or concerns, call the Chamber. And the Chamber's going to act as our clearinghouse to see where that business is within the building process. Are they just establishing? Are they kind of in the dream part? Are they needing finance? Are they ready to come to the city and actually get started? So the Chamber has graciously stepped up and is going to act as that point of contact and help kind of connect people with the right stage, the tools that they need at the stage that they're in. We wanted to be seen as a resource and not a hindrance, at least us at the city side. We didn't want to be looked at as something you had to do to move on. We wanted it, when you contacted us, to leave going, I'm in a better position because I contacted the city. I now know what I need to do, or I know about this great new tool that the EDC has, or I know kind of a wealth of where my business can now be established. So I can go and start to look for new businesses, look for new places to rent, because I now know where it's zoned, and they can start on that contract process. Another thing is, together we're better. It takes a community. It takes all of us for a good, strong business community. It takes the EDC, it takes the Chamber, it takes the city, it takes residents in order to, kind of goes into that buy Blue Springs as well, that when you're buying local, you're helping support local. So it's just kind of tying up several campaigns and initiatives that we have as well. One of the things that when we chatted with current business owners, that they said they didn't feel like they were wanted. That was something that we took to heart when we were framing this book is the overall theme, we want you. We want your business here in Blue Springs. I don't want you to come to the city and say, I wasn't felt like I was wanted or needed. And that was something that throughout the entire process, the look, feel, verbiage, everything that we did was, we want you here. I want your business here in Blue Springs. I don't want you near Blue Springs. I want you in Blue Springs. And that was something that when we were going through the process, we made it a very big point to actually physically say it in the booklet. As I mentioned, we had some homework to do. Internally, we overhauled our business application form. We consolidated a few separate forms that we found along the way. That way, people didn't have to constantly be filling out forms as they were going. This form right here is now fillable on the city's internet site. It's submittable, as well as, well, it just kind of looks nicer. Another thing is educating businesses about the business license procedure, especially about the liquor license. That was one thing that when we were chatting with recent business owners, that they didn't quite understand how long of a process that took. It could take six to eight weeks for you to get a liquor license, and when you're opening up a business, it's kind of the thing that you don't think of is timelines and how they all kind of work together so that you can have your grand opening. I want you to go to your ribbon cutting. I want to be there, and I want you to have everything that you need when you get, when you cut that ribbon to start and be successful. So that's one thing that all of our partner agencies, when we have somebody come through the Chamber, is to talk about, if you need a liquor license, you probably need to get started on that right away. That way, they don't come to this assumption that it's something you can pick up five or six days before an open date. Pretty much just a heavy public education campaign about that process, as well as increasing internal communication. And we had some internal customer service training that kind of goes along with that. And now what you see is the booklet. It's, booklets are kind of hard to write because you get into a, is this so big that it's overwhelming, or is it so small it doesn't mean anything to anybody because you don't have any meat on it? We hope that we struck the correct balance on that. It's warm, inviting, and it walks you through the process, tells you where to go for more information, but is not so overwhelming that it's a discouragement. As you can see, it's broken down into six categories. Getting started, which, like I said, kind of tells you where to begin, and that's the Chamber's office. Building a business plan, this is something that every business needs, helps you secure financing, and kind of is a roadmap to show you where to go. Naming, registering, and organizing your business, this is, it takes kind of a brief look at how you should be organized to best fit your nature and limit your risk. Naming, registering, and organ, I already said that, didn't I? Choosing the right location for your business. Us at the city side at least, this is where we found that we had the most stumbling blocks, was that people already had come to us, had signed a lease for operation, and then come to realize they weren't zoned for that. When we were talking with our partner agencies, this is the part that at least us at the city side were asking that you could stress, that before you signed a legally binding document, please come into the city for a pre-op meeting. These are free meetings. You can come in. Let's talk about your business, what you'd like to do, and where you can actually do it within the city. This way, as well as we could hook them up with the EDC that they could find available properties. These are tools in the EDC's toolkit that they have that that business may not be aware of. As well as city, county, state, and federal licensing, this is kind of the part most people dread. We kind of walk them through that process of, here's what you need at every single agency, as well as when you go to the online component, you just click on it, and the forms are all there. As well, the last thing is what's next? What happens when you're growing? Year two, year three look a lot different for businesses, especially if you're adding staff. Here's the things that you can expect. The final part is the resource guide. These are all tools and organizations that are located here in Blue Springs, as well as in the metro, that can help you grow your business, help you connect with financial institutions, clubs, EDCs, chambers. Pretty much anything that you need to open a business is hopefully in this book. Along the way, we came up with helpful tips, which are pro tips and things to consider. If you read nothing else within the resource, I'm hoping these big color boxes jump out. They cover things like if you're going to start a home business, you might want to check with your HOA. Because as you know, not every home business is allowed with an HOA. They have their own separate ruling bodies and their own rules. They also have, your homeowner's insurance may not cover your business assets. These were things that our steering committee was taught, kind of lessons learned. We're trying to pull those lessons learned and put them out in a highly visual graphic way that kind of jump off the page. Beyond the booklet, like I said, I don't know if you guys have gone to the new city's website, but it does have a pretty powerful, this guide has a very pronounced presence on our new website. If you click on the business tab, the guide actually jumps out as a huge graphic. You click on that, and you go into the sub-pages. Sub-pages are right there, as well as the Chamber of Commerce has it on theirs, and the EDC will have it on their new website. We have, we, about three weeks ago, we hosted a combined employee training and network event where we actually got everybody in the business processing, whether it's EDC, Chamber, or city, into one room. And we talked about kind of how our business processes work, what works, what doesn't, what should we work on. These are meetings that we plan to have every six months. That way, everybody, from the person who answers the phone, all the way up to decision-maker, knows what's going on. Our next steps, we're kind of in it right now, and that's the education campaign. We're going around to all the boards. Our last board is going to be Wednesday morning, and that's when we start our external push. We're going to be continuing our biannual meetings, continue to look at our internal processes, at least at the city side. What can we do for ordinances? How can we maybe use some more plain English throughout those ordinances or combining ordinances to make it easier for businesses to open? We are also going to be partnering with the library. The library has some How to Open a Business or Entrepreneurial Style classes. In the spring, our plan is to, while they have those classes, have an EDC, Chamber, and city representative right there at those classes. That way, if you're an entrepreneur and you have a question, we're right there and can answer your question immediately. This is just kind of was our thought while we were going through. It wasn't about writing a book. It's about redefining a process. It's something that kind of we all took to heart, everybody who touched this book. Like I said, I could have written a book very quickly, but what we really wanted to do is redefine the way we did business. Woo-hoo. Do you guys have any questions?
Are there any questions from council? Councilman Edmondson?
Not necessarily a question, but a compliment to you and everybody that was involved in this. A very nice, well-laid-out, you know, your pro tips and stuff is good, because that brings the eye right to that. So if you got them hooked with that, then they go in-depth and read it. If not, at least they've read that part. And I don't know how many times people call. I mean, as being in a business, I hear it a lot. You know, having something all in one format, all in one area that they could pick up and take, as opposed to getting a piece here, a piece there, a bit there, great job. My compliments very much.
Councilman Carter, and then Councilman Culpepper.
I would echo those compliments as well, and I think it dovetails nicely with our new comprehensive plan as a welcoming document that we want your business in Blue Springs. I guess a question I would have is, and you may or may not know the answer to this, where does this put us relative to surrounding cities? Give us a leg up? Get us in line with what they already do?
The only city that I'm aware of in the metro that has something like this is the City of Kansas City. We have had several, actually, when I presented to the Chambers, we had some of the people from our sister cities, and at least some independent, say that they wish that those cities had something like this. I'll be honest, I have yet to see one that has, it's a partnership document and not a sole source document, meaning it's not just a city authoring it. I think what gives us a little bit of a competitive edge, and this is just in my little opinion here, is that this is a document that was written by the city, the Chamber, and the EDC as one. It wasn't one or the other. It's not like I stuck these logos on here. I mean, we wrote this together, which is another reason why it took a little bit longer, but I'm hoping it's a better document.
Councilman Culpepper?
Yeah, I want to compliment you also on, because I think it's a wonderful tool. And it's nice to know that when people come into the community and want to do business, they aren't filling out 500 forms, name, address, phone number, and so forth. To have the speed of the forms feed each other is something we've needed for a long, long time. I like the idea very, very much that it's a joined effort, and people will get the same message no matter who they go to. And I think that just makes it so much easier. So we're a business friendly channel. We want to make sure we stay that way. And again, my compliments. Excellent job.
Councilman Levsey?
Kim, can you just talk about where these are going to be available, what the distribution's going to be like, now that it's complete finally?
Sure. Right now, they are available at the city, the Chamber, the EDC, and both library branches. I was talking to Jaclyn from Mid-America, or from Mid-Continent Library, and she says that she actually can't keep them in stock, which is great. I love to hear it. They are also open to any business. Like I said, we've kind of been making presentations along the way, and anybody that feels like they would like a stash or two, more than happy to drop them off. They're also available at CJC. CJC, as you know, is part of our business development process, so they wanted to stack as well.
Anyone else down there? Administrator Johnson?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Kim and all of our partners, great job. This, the presentation here, we totally set the council up to do this after the budget work session last week, because you'll remember, I spent a lot of time talking about community engagement and what that means. And this, this product is a collaborative initiative, which is really, it fits very perfectly with what we talked about last week and how we want to take a new approach and a new paradigm with regards to how we communicate. Rather than us pushing the message about how we start a business, but inviting people to come to the table and contribute and share ideas and work together collaboratively. So it's a wonderful product. I'm not aware, other than Kansas City, Kim, of other entities that have this. We will be sharing this with the Mid-America Regional Council and let them talk about it amongst some of their networks and some of their peers. Also, Scott, I know your department was involved in some of the meetings and from the planning side, so great job. And this fits very nicely with the initiative I discussed in great length last week.
We continue to lead the pack as a community, and it just makes you proud to be part of this process. And so for Kim, and Chamber, and EDC, and our finance staff, Christine, your group, Tina back there, and everybody the supporting cast, we just want to thank you for all your work you did. Again, I think it sets us apart. Twenty-six years ago, I had the distinct responsibility of starting a family business, not in Kansas City, but I mean, in Blue Springs, but a family business. And I can tell you, it was trial and error because I had no clue what I was doing. We got it up and running, but it was a job. Whereas something like this would have been very handy to be able to do that. And I think that you can, you can use this, not only in Blue Springs, you'll be able to use it in other places as well, because you guys have set the foundation, and they can tweak it to their benefit. But you certainly are leaders in my book, and I appreciate all that you do. Okay, that moves us down to item five on the agenda, the introduction reading of Bill 4324.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4324, an ordinance of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri to establish and continue the procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials first established by ordinance Number 2101 pursuant to Section 105, 48311.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4324, an ordinance of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri to establish and continue the procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials first established by ordinance Number 2101 pursuant to Section 105, 48311.
Move the bill be approved on the second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Levsey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4489, 98.
Okay. Next, we have introduction reading of Bill 4325.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
Question is, who wants to read this title?
First reading of Bill Number 4325, an ordinance amending Section 355010, Schedule 3, Table 3A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri, by adding new paragraphs prohibiting parking on the south side of Southwest Imperial Lane from a .15 feet west of to a .15 feet east of the northerly extension of the West Lot Line of Lot 18. On the east side of Southwest McIntosh Drive from a .15 feet north of to a .15 feet south of the westerly extension of the North Lot Line of Lot 15. On the west side of Southwest Gala Drive from a .15 feet north of to a .15 feet south of the easterly extension of the North Lot Line of Lot 4. On the north side of the Southwest Peachtree Lane from a .15 feet west to a .15 feet east of the southerly extension of the west lot line of Lot 9 and 11.
Move the bill.
I did that all in one breath.
Was there a motion on all that?
Yes.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Take your time.
Let him catch his breath. See you now. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign. And we will do it again.
Second reading of Bill Number 4325, an ordinance amending Section 355010, Schedule 3, Table 3A of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri, by adding new paragraphs prohibiting parking on the south side of Southwest Imperial Lane from a .15 feet west of to a .15 feet east of the northerly extension of the West Lot Line of Lot 18. On the east side of Southwest McIntosh Drive from a .15 feet north of to a .15 feet south of the westerly extension of the North Lot Line of Lot 15. On the west side of Southwest Gala Drive from a .15 feet north of to a .15 feet south of the easterly extension of the North Lot Line of Lot 4. On the north side of Southwest Peachtree Lane from a .15 feet west of to a .15 feet east of the southerly extension of the West Lot Lines of Lot 9 and 11.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Roll call.
We're not going to change this anytime soon.
I hope not. Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Levsey?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4499.
Did this language come from the Law Department? No. Okay, next we have introduction reading of Bill 4326.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4326, an ordinance amending the 2013-14 annual budget of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4326, an ordinance amending the 2013 annual budget of the City of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Levsey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4500.
The next five items has to do with the Charter Review Commission recommendations, items eight through 12. So we will begin with item eight, introduction reading of Bill 4327.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4327, an ordinance submitting a proposed amendment to Article 12, Section 12.2 of the Blue Springs City Charter to the qualified voters of the city at the next regular election on November 4, 2014, providing for removal of certain prohibitions on political activity by city employees and campaigns for city-elected offices and designating the time of holding said election.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4327, an ordinance submitting a proposed amendment to Article 12, Section 12.2 of the Blue Springs City Charter to the qualified voters of the city at the next regular election on November 4, 2014, providing for removal of certain prohibitions on political activity by city employees and campaigns for city-elected offices and designating the time of holding said election.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Levsey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4501.
Next, we have an introduction reading of Bill 4328.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4328, an ordinance submitting proposed amendments to Articles 3, 4, and 8 of the Blue Springs City Charter to the qualified voters of the city at the next regular election on November 4, 2014, relating to the powers, duties, responsibilities, and qualifications of the mayor and the city council, and designating the time of holding said election.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes. Is that one? Okay.
Yes, Your Honor. I, after we had discussion on this at the last meeting, I was not, I was not real settled on the reading on the tax issue.
was not real settled on the reading on the tax issue. I, at that point, felt that we needed to accept the changes that were recommended by the commission. So I really would like to open it up for discussion, if I may, and I just, the federal and state tax issue, I'm a little conflicted with. We all want to make sure that anyone who is serving the city is certainly not delinquent on any of their taxes. I also believe that we need to not put undue verbiage in here where we can't, you know, we're going to make it a cumbersome, a cumbersome requirement. So I really am conflicted with the state and federal. As I said, I'm, I know at this point, we have to produce our tax, paid tax receipt. So we know that we are in good standing when we go to file for a position. But I'd like to have some discussion on it.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and have a discussion prior to you making a motion to do anything on it. So is there any discussion from anyone on, on this issue? Councilman Edmondson?
Well, since I was the one that brought this up and, and actually moved to leave the wording as it states in the, in the charter, with the exception of deleting fees. And basically, just real quick, no city councilman shall be delinquent in paying any federal, state, county, or Blue Springs income tax, personal property tax, or sales tax, or fees. That's, was the sentence that was wanting to be added in that, that the commission had, had recommended. And my questioning on that, and the reason why I moved to leave it as it was, was how do you go back and, and enforce this, or regulate it, or check it? My questioning was there, why put something in place that you, that you can't do? The chairman of the, of the Charter Commission explained that at the state level, you sign an affidavit under perjury that, that you are compliant with that, and unless something was filed as a record of being delinquent, that was their way of, of enforcing it. Which to me, and, and he thought that by leaving it as it was, that was at this bar, and that what he was trying to do was raise that bar. And to me, my way of thinking is that we are actually probably more, a higher bar set locally in the fact that we require you to produce a receipt saying that you've paid your taxes. And my other point on making that, that motion to delete those words was that we're elected by the people of Blue Springs, and we're over control of the taxes within Blue Springs as far as how they're dispersed within, you know, for roads, public safety. We're supposed to help regulate that. We don't regulate state. We don't regulate county. We surely don't regulate federal. So I think it's, I think in some ways, we're being a little bit grandocious is what they were asking for as opposed to what would be reality and how we handle things now. And, and that was my argument with that. I have talked with Councilman Culpepper, and, and if, if she wanted to leave the words county in there, I have no issue with that because part of our personal property tax is county tax too. So in, in providing that receipt like we do now, that would also show that we covered that. So I have no objection with that. I just, I feel it's really hard to figure out how to do state and federal, especially with federal income tax. They're so messed up now. It's, you know, you don't know where you're at with that. That's, that's my discussion.
Anyone else?
I think the bar should be held high when it comes to paying taxes. I can appreciate all the blurred lines that you mentioned. I think, I still think it's an expectation of our citizens that we meet this. And, you know, if somebody is willing to go out and say that they do when they don't, then, you know, again, that's perjury, so.
Okay.
I, I support the motion. Well, what's written here?
Councilman Carter?
I hear both arguments. I could be on either side of it as well. But I, I think as, as leaders of a community, we should be above reproach, and we should take it to a higher standard. And no, not by the letter of the law are we responsible for any of those taxes. But if it comes out later in the media that, you know, one of us is delinquent in federal taxes, and the IRS is coming after us, I think it looks bad for the city. And I think it's more a perception thing than anything else. And I personally would not have a problem signing that affidavit. So I would support the motion as well.
Okay, there has not been a motion yet.
Your Honor, I would make that motion. I move to amend section one of council bill forty-three twenty-eight by inserting on page two, in the second paragraph of section three point three of article three, and on page six, in the second paragraph of section four point two of article four, after the words paying any, and before the words Blue Springs, the words federal, state, county, and after the words Blue Springs, and before the word taxes, the words income, personal property, and/or sales.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. We have four. Okay.
Three, two.
Hmm? Was it, was it two noes?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So it fails then?
Does a, does a motion, is that a simple majority?
Well, it's, it's to amend an ordinance and a ballot issue, and I would think you would need four votes.
Well, that was my thinking, so, but I defer to.
Because it's, it's, it's an ordinance, and it's a ballot issue.
Even, even, even on, even on the amendment, too?
Even on the amendment.
Okay. That being the case, the motion fails then on the three, two vote. Okay, now we're back to the original.
We're back to first reading.
Right. Back to first reading. Okay, Councilman Fowler?
Yes, Your Honor. Relative to this issue, I want to say that I would be supportive of the mayor voting on every vote. Three, three tie, the mayor votes to break a tie. If it's four, two in favor, you know, already passes, but the mayor votes. Four, two against, the mayor votes, and it wouldn't, you know, no change. But it would help in a situation like this, if it was a three, two tonight, the mayor could break that one way or the other. So I do support that. Relative to some of the other powers that, of the mayor, I think that that does extend the executive branch too strong into the legislative branch. And, and I apologize, I was not here last Monday night when the council worked, did a work session on this. I was at a visitation and couldn't make it. But I was there when Joe Flynn, at the, the original Charter Commission, when Joe Flynn talked about the separation of powers and the balance. And, and I respectfully have to go with that in this situation. But I appreciate all the, all the dialogue the council's had on this issue.
Yeah, and, and the chair of the commission did a great job explaining and, and going through that. So, okay. Councilman Edmondson?
If I may, and, and this is, because I'm not sure, so maybe direct this towards Nancy. Since that motion failed?
Right.
Can I come back and make another motion on the same issue?
Yeah, I'll see why not.
Well, I would like to make the motion to do the same thing, other than, I would like to delete federal and state out of there and leave in county, which is, again, raising the bar a little bit, and Blue Springs. So it'd be the same wording that she had, except deleting after any, federal and state, take that out, and, and insert county.
But county is already there. So what you just want to do is remove federal and state?
Correct.
Right. Okay. Everybody understand the motion? Okay, so you offer this motion. Is there a second?
I'd second that, Your Honor.
Okay. Is there any discussion on it? Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, so this would be when you pay a personal property tax or a real estate tax? Is that when this would come into play?
Refer to?
This, this limits it to personal property taxes. Real, because you have a list. If it's not listed, it's not included in the delinquency. So your real estate taxes are not included in this.
So it's just personal property?
Just personal.
Okay, all right.
Did you want to include real estate?
I don't believe we'd have an issue as far as trying to track real estate. That's...
You get a receipt just like your personal property tax.
So you could show that you paid it, but that's not included in this language. So a person could be delinquent in their real estate tax, which becomes more of an issue, I think, than the federal and state.
True.
So you might want to consider real estate too, instead of just personal property.
So where would you want to insert that in, as far as if you were going to insert it in?
It could easily be inserted between personal property and the word or sales. It'd just be a list of income, personal property, reels?
Okay.
Property, or sales tax.
Okay. I'm, I have no objection to that.
So that, your motion includes that then?
Yes, that'd be fine.
And your second includes that?
I second.
Okay, any other discussion?
We all understand, I hope.
Okay, you've heard the motion. You had heard the discussion. All in favor, aye?
This is the amendment, correct?
This is the amendment.
Right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign, I think this time. We've got five yes folks. Okay. Now, now we're on the first, we're on the first reading as amended.
I'd like to, can I go back for a second to Councilman Fowler's comments because I was making those arguments about blurring the lines between the executive and the legislative? It was reported that I said that I was not in favor of the mayor voting, which was not true. And I think I said that and underlined that I was in favor of the mayor voting, but just like you, I have concerns moving forward about the blurring of the executive and the legislative branches.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? So we will now vote on it as amended, on the first reading. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Aye.
Okay, four, one.
Second reading of bill number forty-three twenty-eight as amended, an ordinance submitting proposed amendments to articles three, four, and eight of the Blue Springs City Charter to the qualified voters of the city at the next regular election on November four, two thousand and fourteen, relating to the powers, duties, responsibilities, and qualifications of the mayor and the city council, and designating the time of holding said election.
Move the bill be approved on second reading and given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Carried with four yays and one nay, given ordinance number forty-five zero two.
Next we have introduction reading of bill forty-three twenty-nine.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number forty-three twenty-nine, an ordinance submitting proposed amendments to article seven and eight of the Blue Springs City Charter to the qualified voters of the city at the next regular election on November four, two thousand and fourteen, providing for notice of certain actions on the city's website in lieu of publication in a newspaper, and certain records be made available on the city's website, and designating the time of holding said election.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of bill number forty-three twenty-nine, an ordinance submitting proposed amendments to article seven and eight of the Blue Springs City Charter to the qualified voters of the city at the next regular election on November four, two thousand and fourteen, providing for notice of certain actions on the city's website in lieu of publication in a newspaper, and certain records be made available on the city's website, and designating the time of holding said election.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Carried unanimously given ordinance number forty-five zero three.
Next we have introduction reading of bill forty-three thirty.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number forty-three thirty, an ordinance submitting a proposed amendment to article fourteen of the Blue Springs City Charter to the qualified voters of the city at the next regular election on November four, two thousand and fourteen, providing for repeal of the article in its entirety as it relates to a schedule of transition which has been completed, and designating the time of holding said election.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of bill number forty-three thirty, an ordinance submitting a proposed amendment to article fourteen of the Blue Springs City Charter to the qualified voters of the city at the next regular election on November four, two thousand and fourteen, providing for repeal of the article in its entirety as it relates to a schedule of transition which has been completed, and designating the time of holding said election.
Move the bill be approved on second reading and proceed, and given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Carried unanimously given ordinance number four-five zero four.
Next we have introduction reading of bill forty-three thirty-one.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number forty-three thirty-one, an ordinance submitting proposed amendments to article five and seven of the Blue Springs City Charter to the qualified voters of the city at the next regular election on November four, two thousand and fourteen, relating to the powers of the city administrator and the budget, and designated the time of holding said election.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second? Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of bill number forty-three thirty-one, an ordinance submitting proposed amendments to article five and seven of the Blue Springs City Charter to the qualified voters of the city at the next regular election on November four, two thousand and fourteen, relating to the powers of the city administrator and the budget, and designating the time of holding said election.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Levesey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Carried unanimously given ordinance number four-five zero five.
And I want to thank you for getting through that. That was a lot.
Yeah.
And also to our esteemed city administrator for being able to get through item six two times. And did all that in a timely fashion. So appreciate that. That brings us to Merrill